...
First, we intend to have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I think you approve the consent agenda as listed.
Right. Flushing seconded for the discussion. All those in favor? All right.
All right.
Here it is. Next up, county engineer. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, did you know that we were removing the monthly earnings and collections?
No, I did not.
Okay, because we signed them last.
Okay.
That first, that first, that second.
So would you amend your...
So, sorry about that.
The motion could be amended to withdraw those.
Okay. Don't you approve the amendment to the motion? Okay. All right. So all those in favor of the amended motion?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next up, Brian Edwards, county engineer, open bid for new pickup trucks. Is there such a thing as new pickup trucks?
Different world, really. Mr. Chairman, as you know, we're seeking a pickup to kind of supplement our fleet in the Grove Bridge Department, Park County Public Works, got some needs in other departments too, but it's just so, you know, it's kind of strange trying to get pickups that, you know, we went ahead and we sold a couple at our surplus option. And we're trying to just kind of cycle through our fleet. This would be our survey truck, and then we'll pass that in for the... We did receive two bids.
Mr. Chairman, the other one that says, why don't they all slash?
Well...
Is there two parts or just one?
There are just one. And the reason is, I was gonna piggyback it and try to pick up because the landfill could use some vehicles too. And then I've talked to Burt and some others that the timing's so bad that if... You guys want to just maybe explain the situation with being in production, Burt? You know, they almost can't bid two or three trucks because, you know, if it's not in production, you can't bid it, right?
Well, right now, the fleet is completely shut down for General Motors, their road fleet being produced. They're not telling us when the 2023s will start rolling out to do so. So any units that we will be bidding has to come out of our general allocation for retail, and we'll push them over to fleet. So the only vehicles I'll be bidding is like this particular truck. It has a production week. It's already going into the system we built. Otherwise, for GM, it's too spotty. You're good. You're good.
And then on my end for Ford is kind of similar to GM's system. There is no fleet currently available. On the Ram side, they've just been slashed. They are available to build them at order. Obviously, it just takes a little bit of time, which I have my sheet in there for you as well. So I can build some Ram with a little incentive for you guys there.
Hey, I like the used trucks. It's much better. So we did receive bid for the Denny Bit hole for Streetball Motors. Got the Denny Bit hole here, and I did make you a handy sheet, so... Look, and I have my help list today. All right. So first of all, this is a Denny Bit hole. Again, this is about trade. A bid for a after gas oil drive. We get $42,975. Is that right, Neil? $42,975. This unit has been scheduled for production ninety days, right?
Yes, approximately.
Kind of highlights. We'll look everything else over. The other one is from my voters. My voters, Cody. This is for just for Ford, I guess?
No, it's a Ram 1500.
Ram 1500, okay, sorry. Ram 1500, $38,386. Or no? $38,386. They did list optional equipment as $2,900 extended warranty, which brings that total with the extended warranty of $41,286. So we'll kind of look at all that. They look like they're pretty close together with the extended warranty. Their scheduled delivery date on that is June 23rd. That's best of it. That's all. We'll flip this over.
Ben, Chevy or GM Steve's car?
Uh, Chevy. And it's scheduled for production week of January 10th.
Yeah. Well, they'll have a look there. Take a look and come back to us and see.
Thank you guys. Thank you guys and gals.
All right. Well, I don't know that it had its tempo. But I think we can move on and discuss the 30 by 30 resolution. You guys have a copy of that resolution? Airborne, Chinese Open. Oh, that sudden everything changed. There we go. So what's the driving this? Is it the federal government's executive order to preserve 30% of land in the U.S. by the year 2030? While a lot of us, myself included, you know, feel that, especially where Park County's headed, maybe preserving some of this stuff might not be a bad idea. I'm just not sure that having it become federal mandate is the effective order is to go. So we... Commissioner Tilden.
When you're... Well, it's going to hit you.
No, we had Representative Winter came and visited with us, and we poached this from, who is this? Was this Fremont County that? Yeah. That came up with the resolution, Molly reworked it to be Park County-centric. And you got it in play, and welcome for discussion.
Uh, yeah, just a couple points. Number one, I'm very much in favor of the resolution. I hope that it does back some weight. I have my doubts, but... Anyway, in paragraph two, and also number six of the therefore be resolved, where you talk about wilderness, wilderness study areas, wildlife preserve, space and other conservation lands. I think we should include lands with wilderness characteristics in there, and also the same in paragraph number six. And the reason for it right now, to be more precise, we've got 370,000 lands that have been identified as lands with wilderness characteristics. And the director of the stroke of ten tomorrow to declare them to be managed with wilderness area.
So you're, and what I'd like to try to do is if we can get those corrections or those additions done right now, we can approve it. Or if there's going to be a bunch of them, we can...
No, I read the whole thing. We only included...
Hey, you got that? Okay. The only thing I came up with is in the third, whereas it's been a bad people mind, whereas the federal government owns nearly half. I don't believe federal government owns the land. I mean, the people, it's the people's land. It's federal lands. It's federal lands, and they're managed by the BLM in the United States, the US Forest Service. So if we can, you know, put language in there to change it from being federal, federal government owns to federal, just federal lands that are managed by the government.
Managed.
Yeah.
Probably managed land.
Federal managed land. And then whatever, whatever whereas had well-being in it. Yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Instead of making well-being one word, just type in there. The other comments. Like I said, it's, I mean, I know sometimes these resolutions are just a feel-good thing, but I do like to make a statement that, you know, Park County is serious about their lands here, and we would like it to be a local control rather than a mandate from Washington DC.
Thanks.
I just want to add that I full agreement of the resolution and the changes or the additions too. One thing I want to point out that what I've been reading is, you know, it looks like on paper right now, the Park County's set pretty good because we would give up a lot of possible land for multiple uses. However, when, if this were to go through, there are so much land that is, that they can't get 30%. So it's not a per state or per county issue. If this goes through, they can take 30, they can take kind of state of mind only and leave New Jersey because they don't want, they don't have any land available. So this could affect way more than our 30% within Park County nationally.
Yeah. Okay. The other discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this, we talked about this, I think, that this goes to Washington and our delegation and everybody at the state level.
We'll get... We'll worry about who gets sent to. Okay.
Of course, go ahead, while you can. Okay, but Chairman, I'll move. We go ahead and approve the resolution with the changes discussed.
Second. Flushing seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those? Are you curious? We got a lot of...
Mr. Chairman, that would be 2021-8.
2021-8.
And you need a number, right?
Yeah. And I guess probably the last resolution is going to get, oh, it's about 50 years, yeah.
So you understand that? So when it's a resolution, then you type in 2021-8, okay? Well, and actually, let's see, we're at 81, 2, and 3 because we had an error while I was gone. We had to name three resolutions, 73A, 74A, and 75A, to keep track of them in our system. Because we already had a 73, 74, 75. And yeah, it was just a mix-up between me and Hans when I was out sick. Things happen sometimes.
See, you get to say the lead, I think it was the L and the H basket.
Don't tell me that. I don't have enough time to give you vacation.
We won't, we won't hold you. Hey, I'm just curious. What did we do last year? How many, how many were the little...
Oh, well, if you hold on one second, I guess.
I'm just curious.
84. So we're about even with last year. That was even with last year.
Right, there's three in the break, Josh.
19, we only get 74. Yeah. We need to take this on lunch and downstairs. Today's our lunch and downstairs.
Yep, I'll be there.
Are you going to be around for lunch?
Get me over two.
Oh, because I was going to say. Gentlemen over there, are you guys going to stick around for lunch? You're welcome to join us downstairs. I'm sure we have plenty of food. Okay? But everything's off the record down there. Just saying, everything discussed down there is off the record. And I have that recorded because I forgot to pause. All right, now we'll pause. Did you get the, did I send it? Did you get the email from me? Did you just get an email from me, gentlemen? Um, from Bucky Hall? Or his special funding request?
I've gotten one.
You got one yesterday.
Yesterday.
Oh, okay. Well, he just sent it to me today, so I'm sorry. I forwarded it to you guys all. I didn't realize that, because it just had my name, so I didn't know he already sent it. Perfect. 10:15 in the morning, calling... And these were all on...
Pardon?
No, we'll have to amend. I mean, we have six... So yeah, we have...
He needs to go talk to the Yellowstone Regional Air because they got all that money. I mean, Yellowstone Regional Airport.
Well, see, and isn't that why they didn't want any last year?
Well, CYR is different. CYR is a whole different thing.
Oh, okay. And then...
This is chairman only, or...
No, these two are chairman only. That's...
Everything in here been approved?
Uh, yes, it was all in consent agenda.
It's right down there.
Okay. I mean, they will do a check and call. Don't be rushing me. Don't be putting...
Chairman, thinking your time is, chair is almost up. Did you see we split it with your agendas here? I know. I was trying to do that. I've been trying to get fired for six months. Oh, great. Thank you. Who's that I missed, or?
Oh, I don't know the names.
So Molly, Molly's...
Steve had the initial one.
Oh, okay.
This is Tim Check is moving on.
Really?
Yeah. Go back up to Montana.
They opening that up or what?
Oh, yeah. That'd be interesting.
What's that, Dave?
Sure, last day or the end of day, right?
I think with the physicians too, it'd be interesting. I don't know if she can... I think she was, I think she was locked in for two years down there.
Well, it's been a long year.
Yeah, it hasn't been two years. I wouldn't mind having her.
I know.
I know the quantity.
Did they get any of those slash code, Burt? I know they were planted.
So CJ, is Christmas getting exciting to the Baker household?
We've been six, eight to hold it.
Oh, bummer.
But I think it's going to be good. It should be good. They're not big sex. He has a little bit in his present. He is the worst secret keeper of those things. He's not been informed about, maybe he's got some pretty... He was supposed to give a secret to his boy or a girl. He's like, that's boy. And then he is just, uh, interested. No interest.
Um, they haven't told us until the night on Thursday yet. It's not straight up to him. I got canceled for COVID.
Oh.
They're trying to figure out how to... Scavengers.
Here about ten minutes, you take a break. Spelled fruit downstairs. Must be the...
What?
Beef.
Must be.
Don't be in it, man, look. Oh. I can tell you, probably. I did you real close. Give me a second. Let's say it's real September. Because I have, I have, you know, call me about it. About, you know, Nicholson. So we're going to just... I've been told that a couple of times.
Have you?
Yep.
Maybe we can put it extreme.
That's why, yeah.
I'm just sorry.
30 is what I've been told several times. Except I never watch Cowboy game with our old male cowboys. What about commission?
You say yes.
God, CJ can't watch commission without your help. Can we get the audit up there, huh? Okay. But in one box, maybe the other box, and I just... Can't control who joins these meetings.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be someone screaming the cowboys.
Keep that a public meeting. Probably move down to three cases here. All wonder they got this blown out. And then we took a week off, and that was when they had the big upset. Silent. So, you did it up there. The.
Those rare crimes in Argentina.
It's not a third world country.
Well, I gotta tell you what, people in the United States, all these politicians in life that are in favor of socialists, they need to send them to Argentina for about six months. I mean, last time I was in Buenos Aires was about 15 years ago and it was a vibrant view. Now it's like a tiger. They have 100% inflation every year. And I don't know how you do business down there because the exchange rate is 100 to 1. One place was worth a penny. But you go into a restaurant or shop and say you buy something that's worth, they have a list for a thousand places. If you pay them American dollars, they'll give you an exchange rate of 191. Then you go to the black market and you'd actually get an exchange rate of 231. I don't argue with it.
How often were you in the black market?
Well, I mean, we went to a restaurant stakeout. I would pass by it. Probably in the top one or two stakeouts that I've ever been to in the world. I mean, it's funny to me how they were having a bill with like some, I don't know how many dollars to pay. So they worked out about $250 or $60 for four of them with wine and the whole nine yards. And then they discounted it in a restaurant for every state American day. And it came down to about 160 bucks for four of them. And you can't hold it for four people like cash for that.
Oh, no.
So it's made in a poverty down there.
Well, we're running quite a bit ahead of schedule. Folks don't mind, we'll turn this over to Mr. Emeritus Buttigieg Hall and presenting here. I mean, presenting to CYR.
Well, I did pop you guys, commissioners, excuse me, email yesterday kind of explaining what was up. And I know during, I made a presentation, I think for CYR. But I deferred asking for money at that time, but we've always got, initially we're getting 30 grand and the first time the governor made cuts and we cut 4%. It was down to 28 and change. Now, the last time it was down to 26 and obviously last year I didn't even ask for anything because nothing was going. But we had our Chicago MRG, minimum revenue guarantee on the Chicago flight this year. They talked this, I wouldn't say they talked this in the taking September because Labor Day weekend, the flight's always full. But the last two weeks it basically was flying empty. Drawn ten purses, so I'm having to pay them and it's wiping me out plus some. So, and that along with the pilot shortages were losing Delta, I think just for one year. But Aaron Buck and I have been on the phone to Alaska, to United, to Delta, to SkyWest. The SkyWest and Delta people are kind of giving us a little bit of the runaround because the SkyWest people said, well, you'll have to ask Delta if they'll do MRG here. And the Delta guy said, they'll have to ask SkyWest.
So that is the whole, this will really, I mean, we don't want to get off the week. We have plenty of time, but it is, SkyWest just doesn't have pilots.
Right. And they, out of Salt Lake City, SkyWest or Delta has gotten rid of the flag to Cody, the flight to Great Falls, the flight to Grand Junction, Colorado. And then there was that non-stopping Minneapolis, they got rid of that. And then out of their Minneapolis hub, they got rid of a flight to Marquette and a flight to Omaha. And they've kind of done that all over their system. What happened was during the, during the big COVID hit when they weren't flying as much, a lot of the mainline pilots took early retirement. Well, they're the major leagues and the double A and triple A is the regional airlines. And so a bunch of people got promoted. Regional airlines don't really pay that much. Zach Bowman, who ran for commissioner, he's got his airline transport and he actually flew a United flight into Chicago. And then he was flying for commuter airlines in Alaska that had a crash and they grounded all the planes. And he was like, he's driving a truck at Boise and make up money.
I also heard, and I don't know if it's true, I guess that's why I'm asking you, but that United and some of them of that size, SkyWest are changing the size of airplanes or the makeup of the airplane. So some of the pilots currently are not trained on these other airplanes.
That's gradually happening, but anybody coming up through the ranks is trained to fly this, all the 50 passengers, the two different 50 passengers that fly in there. And I'd be surprised if they're not trained to fly the 70 passengers. But the problem is, SkyWest can fly 10 Delta flights, what they call pro-rate, where they can fly at their decision, their expense, their risk. And we were one of those and they, they told us we're a complete leisure market and they don't make as much money as they do on a business traveler market, which is true. But they could have, I mean, the flights this summer were pretty full all the time. Not full, but you know, 80% or so, they could have raised the price of it, taken it by 100 bucks. Because almost everybody flying wants to go to Salt Lake City or go west from there and has an American Express Delta Scott Miles car. So it's a little bit of, we just, if the ladder has about 30 runs on it and they can only do 10, we're probably about 11 or 12. But nonetheless, it's.
But you're saying that, you know, you see this for a year, but if it's pilot shortages, they see it rectifying itself within a year?
To some degree. I mean, there'll still be people at the top retiring. But I think the feeder system is better now than it was. And I don't think the airlines are ever going to, the commuter ones are ever going to pay good money of people to take the jobs that want to have a career. And so that's what they're counting on, probably. People with more expertise than me have said if we think it's going to be that bad a year. The good news is United's going to bid on our essential air service contract again. And that's up in, I think, first week, second week, it changed. It'll be the same two flights a day and then additional flight or two in the summer. But the Jackson Airport is going to be closed for three months or more. And we really battled Delta to give us some of those flights. They kind of said, we're sending everybody out to Idaho Falls. And you go, you realize you're a leisure traveling public, it's not going to be happy with that when they have to drive from Idaho Falls. Unless they just want to go to Jackson, but they can't go to Jackson and the park both, there's no way. And, but we're, United's going to run all their flights through here. So that'd be a good experience because those will be the, probably the Amber 175, switcher 70 passenger jets. And they actually have first class in them. And they'll be coming up from, I'm not sure if they're coming from Denver or they're more mainline like coming from Dallas or Chicago. And we had a nice conversation with Alaska and, but they're, they're just dumping two of their flights into Jackson because they just started about last year. And they're going to go to Idaho or they're going to go to Boise. They, they seem to think that ultimately they're going to have a lot of many hub in Boise, in which case we'll probably get at least summer service on Alaska. It's great if you're flying west, but you'd have to change planes at Boise and then go to LA.
Seattle.
Seattle, San Francisco, whatever. But the overall MRG commitment was, it was a lot, but, but we ended up being on the hook for 100, roughly 150,000 and the state pays 40% of that. And another headache I have, the guy I've been dealing with, I sent him the information and then I never heard from him. So I sent it to him again and this time it got kicked back like, he doesn't work there anymore. It was Sean Burke, I don't know. But so I, I talked to the Brian Olson's administrative assistant, he's the head of aeronautics. She says, send it to us, we'll get you the money. So I'm kind of like, she has enough money to pay the 60% to, what you call it, United. But usually they send me a check and I put it in the bank and wire the whole thing with United. Kind of back and forth with that. Why don't you call me so we can talk about this? But I'm trying to prime a pump for this coming year. We have a CYR meeting in January and most of my fundraising over the last few years has just been hitting the low hanging fruit and people that know me and just go in and meet them and say, hey, I'm getting 500 bucks here, a thousand bucks here. I think I'm going to take direction from the board with if they want to do a mailing or be doing the same thing. But I think last year I raised, last time I fundraised, I raised almost 50,000 bucks. And a couple of heavy hitters and, and there's a few more heavy hitters I'll probably hit and probably score with, but.
I think pretty much that's what I think that I've just let it pretty much go. I wouldn't be raising him, that was. You already raised it. So you already raised it. I know, so I was going to ask the sources of funding, pretty much covered that.
Yeah, the city of.
Did you ever get any money from the travel council?
No, they can't.
They can't? Why?
It, they statutorily, they have to use all their, they give 10% or whatever percentage they give back to the county and the municipalities where the taxes collected, they have to use all the rest for promotion. Now.
What do you do? Want to see why I am?
Yeah, but they, they might give me, they won't give me money to pay the airlines.
No, but I mean, it'd be a bookkeeping thing, but you do more than just that with the funding, correct? You do promotional things. And it stands in a nutshell, I believe, was what I, what is to promote air travel in Wyoming, Cody, Wyoming.
And we have a, the state tourism does that already. And we have a grant from state tourism and the airport has a grant from, a grant from the travel council. And, but we, and they're on this board. And it's been discussed before, it's like, they aren't allowed to give us that kind of money.
Is there anything we can do or deal with with the public as far as the frustration with United and some of the stuff this last summer?
I mean, a lot, a lot of it's still a pilot shortage, it really is. United is expanding big time in Denver. I don't know, if you've flown through there, you know it's a, then they've totally added on to that one. I think it's E, isn't it, to be defeated. And same with Salt Lake City, they've done that. But it's still the pilot shortage. And the problem is, you know, the crews are like railroad crews, they timeout. And if a crew flies a red I N to Denver and they timeout, then they got to find a different crew to fly. they timeout, then they gotta find a different clue, crew to fly that plane to Cody. And, and as soon as one flight's late, it just, it can snowball, snowball pretty fast.
I think that's what we found was that later in the day, things get a lot worse.
Yep.
But the other thing is how they treat those clients that, that didn't get to go on Wednesday night. There's times that they're shoved clear till Friday because of the seats and they're like, wait a minute, you know, there's a problem here.
There's, there's, we're, one of the things I think we're gonna, we'll get some 70 passengers sent here this summer. Which will alleviate the problem to some degree. But none of, but the morning flight out of here in the summer is pretty full. And if it's a 70 passenger, it's still gonna be pretty full. I went, I went, I traveled to a, me and a friend from Red Lunch traveled to Denver to play an racquetball tournament this summer. And we flew back on, we flew back on Saturday. Anyway. We spent a hundred and twenty bucks in like Denver airport. But the flight did make it eventually.
You were, earlier you were talking about United's gonna bid on our, you know, our essential air, you don't see it, you don't see Delta bid on it at all? Really?
They, they told us that. Sky West told us that and the Delta guy. The Delta guy we talked to is in charge of all the Western United States. He was quite friendly and sent a phone call with us right away. And, but the United people, that good news is like, they're gonna, we're gonna have all the extra flights from Jackson. And uh, if that's a good demonstration to them, then they might consider that. The airport has purchased more ground handling equipment so we can handle larger planes. The whole time I've been on that boarding, we're, we need a tug, you know, pushback thing. Well, we're getting, we got a tug.
Um, with all the millions of dollars in the airport, do you, does it have any way to approach them and say, what about a promotion portion of it?
I am part of them and we, statutorily, we can't.
Definitely can't.
Federal statutory. I mean, it's the weirdest thing, all these things with minimum revenue guarantees, pretty much either have to come from the local groups, whether they're counties or city funded or, in the case of the Casper Airport, they have. When they took over the airbase there, they have all sorts of warehouses and dwellings and stuff that were already built. And they have a pretty healthy amount of money coming in and they, they don't have a lot of trouble when they have, when they need to do an MRG. Just because they're pretty solvent and so, and they can, they have a larger pool of public to go with, so.
Yeah, just curious, have you put Delta and Southwest at all about continuing to serve as a code with some type of revenue guarantee? Are you going to?
Yeah, and they were like, no.
You're kidding.
No, that, that Delta guy was kind of. Then we started getting like, it was Aaron and I on the phone to him. Aaron's out, airport, okay. And he, we talked to Dan Belmont, our contact at, at Sky West. And he goes, no, no, no amount of money is gonna get you an airplane for us, sorry. So we talked to the guy from Delta and he said, yeah, we could, you could probably do an MRG, but that'd be up to Sky West. So I, I just, I, I, I feel from those conversations we've had, they will be back. Maybe as early as next summer. But they're not coming back this year.
So the issue on the table over here, you're asking for money?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're helping me prime the pump, let's put it that way.
And Kevin, I go ahead and make a most forget point six, I don't. I don't necessarily want to, but we told you to come back and ask them. And we have Kevin.
I'll start with it.
Lou and second is further discussion, Mr. Gill.
And your reasoning to do, you want to get things moving, you can't wait till two?
Yeah. Um. It's hard to go, it's hard to start negotiating with them. When it'd be a big bluff, like, you know, playing poker with them and I, I have $2 worth of chips and they've got.
But you have 50,000 right now.
It's gonna, no, it's gonna be gone. No, I'm, we're writing a check to them and they'll take us down to about three or four thousand bucks.
I appreciate it, but, but do I just, I have trouble subsidizing airlines.
That's how it works.
I, it doesn't make it right.
I know, but that, that for small, for non hub airports. That's how it works. That revenue guarantees and, and Jackson does them all the time.
Jackson is a lot more 100% dependent on tourism.
Yeah.
We have a lot of people in the county that can give two shits about it. Sorry, just saying, I'm not saying I'm one of them, I'm just saying, we're spending back fair dollars to subsidize airlines that don't want to step up. Provide a service.
Um, well, the, the second, the first or second year we did the Chicago flight, we didn't have to write a check. We, we, enough people filled the planes. But at that time, um, Park County tourism was actually advertising in Chicago. And we got a lot of international travelers because they could come in like from Frankfurt or Paris or Berlin or London and come straight into Chicago and then straight into here. So they'd only change flights one time to come to Yellow Hill Park. And so, and it's, so they call it a minimum revenue guarantee, they want their, their flight, it's gonna cost them this much money to make it. And if the flight's full, you won't owe us any money. Or if it's, you know, night, I think they usually figure it about load factor between 80 and 95% of, of people on the plane.
Awesome.
Just one other question, because of where we are and who we serve, basin, why do you talk to the other couple counties in the basin to see if there's any help there?
Um, I was going to before the COVID hit and then I, I haven't, I really haven't done a lot since April, but I finally been slapped upside the head. It's like, okay, I at least gotta pay attention to this now. And I probably will in the spring. When you're going to budget times, get on everyone's agenda. Because um, I was all set when the virus hit to start making the rounds. And um, I, I know um, Mayor Wessel has volunteered to give money from the city of Powell. And so I'll put you on the agenda, he's never put me on the agenda, so I'm gonna have to beat him over the head at the next CYR.
Okay. Let's go forward to CYR, the 26,000 for the discussion, a little favor, I suppose. All right. Motion carries. Thanks, buddy.
You know what, thank you commissioners. Um, you want me to want to physically sign a copy? Uh, do you want to physically sign a copy? I emailed you.
I'm locked out, yep.
But.
I'll be the one to speak, I hope.
What's that? I'm mighty. I'll still vote for you.
Well, when you have the conditional tour coming in, you want them going into Billings or do you want them going into Jackson?
Oh, there are reports that they're coming.
Because what, if only the flights are.
The flights are.
The sales.
I'm not gonna want to go outside.
Yep.
That travels well when it comes to government subsidy.
Government subsidizes farmers, what the hell's the difference?
Oh, really?
I'm just, we used to bless that out on French orders.
Well, they didn't get my field box.
If, um, next up?
Thank you very much. All the winter solstice at the boundaries tonight if you're.
Well, that's right, it is.
If you're not occupied, there will be alcohol there, but no finger food. That's just, that's too easy to spread the virus.
You know, I was coming there for supper, it's all passed.
Yeah, you'll have to.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Yeah, is the sheriff out there or someone who's like him?
There's Jeff, the skinny sheriff.
Skinny sheriff.
That's one thing I've never really called skinny.
You are now.
You thought you were, nobody showed up.
I know.
They don't have any money now. I took the last step.
Go figure.
Get Sheriff Stewart, understand Sheriff Varian here to talk about old rifles and request for temporary over hire, what's over hire? Hire accidentally hired, damn it.
We got like three extra, you know.
You can't just store them?
Yeah, put it on ice. Mr. Chairman, Ward, Fish, um, so on the patrol rifles, um, we reached through about 13 years old. And we've kind of reached a point where they, they definitely need to replace minor issues here or there, but anyway, um, what we would like to do obviously with the way things are when you order stuff nowadays. What we'd like to do is go ahead and get them ordered, we're looking at 21 is what our current inventory is, we would look at replacing. We do have a couple new ones we purchased in July that we rely on as spares, because we keep a few spares around in case something goes down. Or if somebody's involved in the answer, where we can seize that weapon, we need that spares issue. So what we would like to do is, is we started already, I think we've got three different bids so far, we've got another bid pending um, from a locally output here. And so we would like to, we've identified what we need, what we would like to see, and we're not going for the, the Ferrari by any means. We're just going for a good reliable service rifle, a reputable brand, just like we've done in the past. So what we're gonna do, and I'd like the commissioner to go move forward with this. Um, we're gonna try to stay within the confines of the budget. I'm pretty confident that we don't have to do a budget amendment to get this done. Um, I think we can cut costs, save some other areas, funds to fuel and oil doesn't kill us. Um, but I think we could, we could follow through without having to do any kind of a budget amendment. Follow through, what we're finding though, um, is when we're looking at the quantities that we're gonna buy. You know, they're telling us four, five months on some, some of them gone right now. But are they a reputable brand we want to deal with? So we're gonna sit down, um, Sheriff Varian, firearms instructor, has been with us for a long time. We have two guys, we just recently got back from armor school. We're planning on sitting down with one of those today to see what do we need to do and what do we need to spend, without, without going through the high end stuff we don't need. So that's kind of where we're at today.
I mean, I understand you're coming to us early and it kind of makes sense to talk about it, it's just everything you're hearing these days is you know, six months out, seven months, eight months, a year, and so. I mean, I understand you're coming in, in budget, but it makes, it kind of makes sense to start getting, getting it rolling. I don't have.
It's one of the things we started, Mr. Chairman, Ward, is with these guys getting back from armor school, oh, we're having them start to go through the rifles. Uh, replacing a few springs, doing a few things, certainly we want them serviceable and reliable. So we started that, uh, and then back for a week and a half, two weeks, so we started going through the weapons, replacing a few springs here and there, make sure they're serviceable, get to.
Um, my question, Scott, my contact, I don't think you need a very high question with me, but if you're gonna be within your budget, why do you need? Why does that need?
More listening.
Well. I mean, I appreciate you coming in, I do, but I mean, is it just in the case that they go over your budget or?
Correct. Our goal is again, we're gonna cut other items we have to as much as we can and try to ensure we don't go over budget. There's a slim chance that we might, uh, okay, it's never happened in the past, we're usually returning back several hundred thousand. Um, we're looking at for these rifles anywhere from, you know, uh, 800 to 1700 dollars a piece. A base rifle without the optics or anything like that, so again, we're gonna go for a serviceable weapon without spending much money.
So if we come in 2000 over, over budget, would they not get a cost possibly up to 30,000?
Sure, 30 to 40, 50,000.
You probably cut a hell of a lot somewhere else.
Sure. Sure, I just, I guess I wanted to be here in case there's a chance, just to inform you that there is a slim chance that you could go over budget on that, but I, I. And again, they may not get here till the next budget anyway. By then we would know and be able to put that money through.
And remind us if you have that carryover, so that we can. Somebody's voted for it.
Okay.
I guess I, are you asking for a motion from us to allow you to go over the budget or is this just informing us if you might?
I think just informing you the situation we're in. With these weapons, it's easy to get them. And realistically, like I said, they might not be here until next budget. All right. Next, so the over hire, the reason I was coming in is uh, over hire, we're looking at a person retiring in the detention facility in May. So kind of same situation we talked about, or a chance to start an over hire process, stay within our budget, not go over. Uh, that person has sensed the importance, they're not leaving. I guess when I was coming to continue on, the reason I'm here now is, is uh, I guess I would like permission with the turnover that we have. In some situations, to be able to have that permission to do that over hire. Um, we're not looking to add any personnel or we're allowed not just to have, we'll be able to hire that person to get them up in training. Uh, and again, stay within the budget, so if somebody leaves, we're always having, she'll, you know, have an extra budget there. And I would work, uh, you know, with whoever, make sure we don't go over that, but just permission, I guess at a blanket, to be able to over hire in a situation where we know which of us can retire without going over the budget.
Personnel stuff, we've talked about your issues of getting people trained and how much downtime and things that that involves, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with having somebody ready to come in, being able to train them, get them ready, because your turnover is fairly high.
For a motion.
Sure, I would move with the sheriff to, to do the over hire situation as he said, as long as it falls within this budget.
Sorry, Lou and second, further discussion.
I just wanted, this trend, wanted to give us a perfect opportunity for Scott to not have, at least for them selecting, take what you can get as a kind of, you know, put them higher. They have them go more in training, keep them pretty cool and warm.
That's a fine statement. Oros in favor?
All right.
Oros.
Commissioner, and if I could say one thing, that the undersheriff variant is, is really taking the training on at a high level within our facility, within patrol and detention. And it's really going a long way with the, the folks who are there, I think that they're, they're getting enthused about that kind of training, they're getting enthused with all the stuff that he's doing, and I think it's gonna help in retention.
I'm just, I'm adding apart about the whole line security, you have a patient that might have 15, so do you have any timeframe when you're looking at hiring one or?
Yeah, Commissioner, all we've done is we cut that off at the 15th, we've already started processing those, looking through them. Yeah, we're, I think we had 24 applications and some very, very qualified people, it looks like to me on paper at least. So we're starting to go ahead and, and background those, kind of weed out some of them. Interesting ones. We do have a great, great group of applicants there, so our goal is, is to go through them. Uh, and then first thing after the, the first of the year, after the holidays, get to interview and we're setting up an interview panel like we did before, where we're gonna bring in some outside people. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna bring in probably uh, some very experienced people in that field, like done before to help, help with those interviews. Hopefully, we would like to see them, uh, you know, fit it down to about eight to 10, or maybe five to 10, someone that can do those interviews, staff that first appear, hopefully get rolling.
Could Sheriff, the sheriff do that too?
No, well, yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll all be, what we're gonna do is uh, typically what we've done in passes is identify those who maybe are towards the top. And then, but everybody will get a chance, will have command staff, everybody have a chance to go through those and then it will select that top group to go to the and hopefully in January or early January will have somebody selected. And I have been in contact with the Homeland Security Cheyenne, so we've been working with those and uh.
Is there anything between now and then, that, I mean, is everything grant applications all in place, is there anything slipping through the cracks?
Well, we're working on that, so what we do is we kind of separate some of the duties, I've got one guy who's good with grants, worked with Homeland Security, he's been talking to them. Um, we've got our administrative assistant, Danny Bills that come in, IT's working with, with Shoveling, you know, where we have access to all his, uh, the former guy. Work, so yeah, I think we're, I think we're sitting pretty good, we're getting pretty good contact with Homeland Security. We do need, I think, to look at the, asking for more money, possibly to ask, grant matching grant for salaries. Oh, I got that yesterday from them. Oh, I got that yesterday from them.
But if we ask them for more money, we're gonna have to go a little bit more.
Well, and I, I think what we're seeing right now with, with this increase, with that increase in salary, which we're not saying we're bringing in that person. We're already paying more anyway. So I think by asking for a little bit more, it's gonna bring what we put into it now. Because I think we're putting a lot more than fifty percent in right now.
Gotcha, okay.
So by asking for a little bit more, it might bring our costs back down to where it should be.
Tell me how to convey that to my banker. I'd love it. If I ask you for more, I'm gonna be paying for less stuff. Cool.
Because I think right now we're paying more than fifty percent. Quite actually, quite a bit.
Okay. Well, thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good talking to you.
Pretty much, chip and scratch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Notice some of the Christmas decorations downstairs. Cool things that right out.
Joy, everywhere, joy everywhere.
Yes, I'm observing.
We got a bid for Toyota while you were gone.
Sounds good. Sounds wonderful.
Real, real popular truck down in Arkansas, they've got a Toyota factory in Florida.
Oh, yeah.
They make a little Toyota half ton. They have available, I think I bought one.
It gets fifty pounds gallons too.
I like it. They got the diesel Colorado.
I think that's a nice truck. I'll go, I'll go while you're done, Jay.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Hit my breath first, I think. So we went back to two of those bids, we received two bids for a two thousand twenty-two through gas pickup, full drive. Went for three month motors, which was a two thousand twenty-two model Ram fifteen hundred and five point seven liter Chevy V eight. Three month motors bid was thirty-eight thousand three eighty-six. They, it comes with a standard three-year, thirty-six, or thirty-six month, thirty-six thousand warranty. And they put an option for a powertrain warranty, five years, sixty thousand miles for an additional twenty-nine hundred. So you put that together, that's forty-one thousand two eighty-six. And then the, for getting in old, they bid eighteen thousand twenty-two Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred four by four crew LT. Five, forty-three liter V eight. Comes with thirty-six month, thirty-six thousand mile warranty. Their price also includes a five-year, hundred thousand mile powertrain warranty. So I guess when I add it all up, I think these are about very, pretty close. Because if by the time you put, you know, I think four probably or four, three month, you're probably get theirs to a five-year hundred thousand. But I think by the time you add that cost in, they're gonna be very similar. So what I'm recommending, because they're so hard to get right now, I'd like to buy one of each. So I'd like to buy the one for three month motors for forty-one thousand two eighty-six, which includes the powertrain warranty. One from Chevy Chevrolet for forty-two nine seventy-five.
Oh, real quick, Diana's probably Ram's four by four as well.
Yes, double four by.
Do you think you can bump them to a hundred thousand?
Um, I can try. I think it sounds like we could get whatever we need to get. It might be a redemption, but that would price to me, I think.
All right. So then back one of these with, then with Google landfill?
Yeah, well, it's Google landfill. What we'd probably do is maybe give to Edmund, and move Edmund's truck in the fleet. I won't, she saw the one that Edmund's driving.
What's that?
We probably give that one to Edmund and then move Edmund into the fleet.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk later, but we have a surplus of.
Sure.
We could have got rid of that account, actually.
Yeah.
Well, I got a question, Mr. Chairman. Who decides that who gets the Chevy and who gets the Dodge?
Well, that's only kind of. You know, both, both good tickets. Mr. Teal?
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to allow the purchase of two pickups, one of each, keep it fair within the county. And like I said, they're real close and distributed which, where, 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 but approved. Both bids for a four and three pickup from that whole town.
Looping second, further discussion.
Are you last? Okay, left though.
Yeah. Both, both were budgets.
Okay. Ours in favor?
Aye.
Most carried. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks for, you know, this way. Yep, appreciate it.
And well, you're, you're gonna talk on the.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, on the, on the equipment real quick, on the excavator. We would like to put all that, we, we Mr. Sheriff, I guess, public, we, the Volvo, the Tri-State was the low bid. They've offered them because we don't have a lot of experience running the Volvo excavator type of equipment that we are familiar, our guys are, would be God gear and cap. So Tri-State's let us use a new piece of equipment brought with now. And we've been running it at the, it's out at the landfill now. Road Bridge crews are running it today, trying to see what they think. Out some of the power crews that have run it. I know Commissioner Teal's already, already operated it. And so what we thought is probably come back after the first and make the decision. The Volvo was quite a bit less money, but we'd wanna make sure we get the best bang to it.
So is there any chance, like, test that out at my place up there? Just, might be a couple of days. No, I like that idea. I'd like, I'd like the guys to get on it. And, you know, get a feel, you know.
We can just make as many people as we can. Landfill guys in Road Bridge. See what you pay. We've got some experienced operators, so we'll see what they pay.
Okay.
The other thing. On the articulated dump.
There's a discussion.
Sorry, huge prices. So what I think we're tossing around, we've discussed with staff, maybe we did receive three bids for the articulated dump truck for the landfill. I mean, it's a long-term investment, something we wanna have for a long time. It is pretty rugged, rough environment out there. So what? Good tough truck to last us a while, whether we do a buyback or just run it till it fall apart, we we wanna be sure we get good ones. As you can see, it's a pretty big investment. The low bid for the three articulated dump trucks was actually the cap with T and E equipment at four fifty-two thousand, four sixteen. And been chatting with a couple of commissioners on, you know, with quite a bit of money as per the amount of use, the hours that we put on per year, whether that makes sense to look at a used equipment. And I started kind of running through, and I know Mr. Teal has as well, looking at some of the equipment that, I was looking nationally, but there, there's quite a bit of equipment just in Montana, some of Montana and in Wyoming as well. I ran through a, you know, equivalent hospital office where you run through side by side, if you buy your buyback, two, you know, two-year buybacks, and I just, real rough numbers. You start getting out pretty old with the equipment. I mean, you start getting the hours up and I think if you get up into that eight, ten-year-old, it's, it's a little bit scary. It's a roll of the dice. You don't know how, you know, somebody's like, what if you'll add, do you still buy? How much they get beat up? Who knows, you know? So it's a little bit of a roll of the dice. The, the thing with the new equipment is it does come with a five-year bumper-to-bumper warranty. So that's something to keep in mind. These things hold their value pretty well, what I've noticed. Yeah, they're, they're comparable. But one, one thing I'll just throw out, just to think about is if we do look at a used one, which I think is worth thinking to look at, I think we ought to stay, you know, plus or minus five years, you know, much, pretty fairly new because they lose thirty, forty percent of their value right off the bat, you know, so. But you start getting out, it's wear, care of hours, it's a roll of the dice.
Convince me of the need for an articulated dump truck. We've worked out there for years with an old broken dump piece of gum.
Part of, part of the deal is we have, I'll say this, because I can't. There's been some operational deficiencies. A lot of times we could not cover and a lot of the lateral problems that you see is because we would go days, weeks without covering. And some of that's personnel related, but some of its equipment is being broken down. And so we need to have a highway truck that's out in an off-road environment. It, they, it just, when it gets slick, wet, muddy, you know, you can't work.
And the other thing, though, with personnel changes, operational changes, we're hoping to do about more of our own. In the past, we hired outside help, Nicholson and other contractors to help in heavy moving in the dirt for the pit for the liner, the pins and cover, which we hope we won't have to do that with this. It'll kind of kill two birds with one stone.
And while I'll say this, Chairman, if you go to, you know, other landfills, go to regional landfills, larger landfills, it's the standard equipment. Some will use like a tractor, pull behind a hand scraper or a belly scraper. But, but the pretty standard is a Trac-O off-road truck. Just that's the equipment for the job. You know, we've gotten by, and being a predator previous, you know, they, they've gotten by with less, but I think things haven't, it's shown, it's shown.
You can move so much more material with that.
Now, these are twenty, twenty-two yard boxes, I think they're on. You know, there's a lot of bedding.
Where we're at right now, though, is we're, we're research.
We're still researching. What I guess I'd like to do is maybe, you know, I don't know if you set a, set a budget on it. We're still looking probably up to first of the year. I don't know if there's stills that will go away between now and over the holidays. I know Lloyd's been looking at a few things. Maybe we could regroup the next few weeks and come back after the first, hopefully a reconciliation. All the either used, if maybe, maybe the news, the way to go there. The way.
Yeah, and I, I wanna add, you know, this particular piece of equipment, most equipment right now has increased. You know, because of demand and supply. This is not quite in that same way. I mean, right now, some of our used, our equipment for more than we paid for. But this is kind of a little different animal. They really have not increased their price. So I think these used equipment, they're still, I can get pretty darn good.
But that's a good lot to do down there, I mean, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's a lot of available equipment out there for this.
So I got just a couple more quick questions. I mean, it's the price here, being it's the enterprise fund, we've got the money. If you want to go this way, we could serve.
Absolutely. We budgeted for this.
Yeah, and I guess the question I have is, would there be any opportunity for road and bridge, use this piece of equipment?
Not very much because most of our stuff is, is off the road. I'm trying to think, I can't say never. Maybe.
Yeah, and obviously, delivery, shipping's gotta be factored into these prices.
Yes.
And in these, I know you, I know you don't run them up and down the road for work, but can you move them from site to site on, on a road or do they have to be transported?
Just can't be transported.
No, but I mean, as far as. You can't drive them on the road.
Yeah.
That's what I thought, that's what I was thinking. We were talking about using it elsewhere if we wanted to.
We have.
Use it, yeah, and transport it.
Now, this would be.
Once it gets there, it stays there. And for.
And it's, it's kind of a thing where it is an investment that, that I, I guess my thought is run it forever. Landfills gonna be there for many, many, many years.
On the, on the use, does he do a description on how it's been used? Hours that are put on, sometimes are different.
Most, most of these are through dealers that I've seen, you know, that, that it's been listed. I'm sure we can make some calls and find out a lot of that.
Yeah. See if it was in a mine or if it was a saddle.
Okay.
Sounds good. Yep, I'll look back next year. What other, you know, throughout, so it's not a whole. Yep, I'll look back next year. What other, you know, throughout, so it's not a little ahead of time or for our. Uh, one thing that kind of toss out, we're moving into a, a boat of machine control. I don't know if we're out of machine control, but, um, one thing that out of the landfill, so our Canada, which is our top actor, which should be out first year. Gets all the sheet ready, they'll know where they're at with the bill, what they've got bills within that group. Well, that's a pretty deep setup, but we're getting that set up right now. Uh, and as you know, we ended up, we forego giving a dozer, which we, we have in our budget to get dozer out there. Uh, instead, we do authorize, just go ahead and buy another motor for it. What we're going to do is probably put the one that we've got that's got the machine control. Out there, because they would use it as they're cutting that XL, they're cutting to a grade, they have a bottle. They use it almost every day that we needed it, Road Bridge, we were getting. So I think we can share, better utilize that machine control. Uh, that's, I guess, our thought, that's my thought. I'm just kind of drawing that out. So the machine control, which out of the landfill, we'll have. Bill and cutting, two grades, using it every day. And then when these guys leave it for a road project or whatever, we'll swap that grade.
Just looking at the future then, when you look at future graders or I'm not sure about your team, I don't know how often you would be using those, but. Do you look at adding that to the cost to get, to have a couple that happen or one each?
We did, and that was what originally when we went to try, I got thinking, because with dozer, I was thinking about getting the shoot so I could have it. In the film, because once you have it at the landfill, there'll be a base station all the time set up, they'll be on a building. They'll be full-time working off that base station. So I thought about that, but I thought, you know, we do have the one in Road Bridge and it's not like. When we have it, it's good. But the landfill could use it every day and, and when they're not, we could send it out to Road Bridge. So fifty thousand dollars.
So that tells, clarify, why can't we move the one that we have in Road Bridge to the landfill and then the new one go to, is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
That's exactly, so the, the additional cost.
So, no additional.
Well, how you move your equipment within this large, this field?
Yeah, I, I just tell them like, you know, they, and I think it's, it's kind of a win-win.
Right.
As a conversation.
You're trying to justify what I didn't want to spend.
No, I, I've justified that we're, we are looking to try that. Save money where we can. And, and I think better, that that was a fifty thousand dollar investment, better utilize that to where we can use it. A lot. You know, instead of project, project.
Okay, well, appreciate it, guys.
All right, thank you.
Good question. Real quick, you can't leave yet. Oh. I was gonna ask a question, but thank you. I know the answer, remember that you had it through.
I should have asked a long time ago with all of these that we do, but on the guaranteed buybacks. Is that only a buyback if we buy upgrade or is that a buyback if we decide we don't want to use it anymore and here take it back? Will they write us a check?
They'll write us a check. It's a guaranteed buyback. Notice that hard it didn't give us work, if they usually are, it's because it's a landfill, the sheet, they uncertain about the.
Thing is.
The use.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, it's, if we want to get out of the business and, or go buy a cap.
Isn't that way on all of the.
That's all, hey, with our gun there, we have part of what is ready.
And we have an exercise task on that.
Surcharge.
Yeah, let's hope the worst. You did see my email and.
Yeah, you got it.
Steve Bill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, bud.
I just wanted to.
So. Let's have Molly do it. Say a little.
Three hundred. The more counties that participate brings the amount of funds to a higher level. And so for Park County not participating reduces obviously the overall settlement numbers as it would to other counties and large cities that weren't wanting to agree to participate. It's my understanding that majority of counties have registered to participate. My purpose is of today's hearing with me to hear whether the commission would make a motion to participate in both the Johnson Johnson agreement, the distributors agreement, and the one while the opioid settlement, which really just details how the funds would be distributed, what they'd be distributed for. Our county's share of this, although that could change, nothing is absolutely final on this in the neighborhood. I believe around eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, eight hundred eighty one thousand six hundred dollars. That would between the two agreements, that would be spread out over a period of roughly seventeen and a half years of those payments. Those payments we have to use to alleviate or mitigate the effects of opioids in our community, which Park County certainly has been a victim of that.
If I can run out one quick question, what's the distribution formula based on? I've been reading this stuff that we have here, I can't figure it out.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it was population, most.
But it just lends to that, it seems like the least populated counties are getting the most money, but makes sense.
And I don't, I've not been certainly in touch with the EDG's office from that. I know ours, for example, compared to Sheridan Townings was higher than Sheridan County's. I know the city of Sheridan participated independently through this, but even if you add those two up, what that formula is. Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I, please. So from an attorney's aspect, I looked at what would be the drawbacks of participating. I really can't see it, I can't imagine Park County at this juncture going after these companies independently. Certainly would just be way too expensive. Though our drawbacks from participating, I don't see one of those would be. Some money, some a lot of money over that period of time compared to what opioids have done to Park County and other counties in the state. There was nothing whatever they got for that, certainly other than that, but it's something that could be used, I guess, towards opportunities.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would make a motion that we approve, yeah, sign the settlement agreements with Johnson and Johnson and the distributors.
And allow the shared side?
Allow the shared side.
Remove the section for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye aye. Think about it. I do that right now.
I would be good. I love it.
I know, isn't it fun?
I have another color too, I mean it's kind of like lime green, it's a different match.
Matches my Halloween dress really nice.
Isn't that always this?
But that's other way. Maybe you're. Don't just red reek. I mean, you know, it's kind of blah this year.
Still festive.
Still festive.
Still festive.
Mark, how do you spell that? Okay, thank you very much.
Right, and don't get your swimmer crew at one thirty, sorry. And don't forget to go hack once.
Yeah, we have to do that, that's the order. And watch the game?
I will be listening to the game now.
I'm gonna zoom in. I will be cleaning.
Hey, well, we got lunch downstairs.
Do you want whatever we can give you?
Right. Was that too many?
Yeah.
Three hundred. The more counties that participate brings the amount of funds to a higher level. And so for Park County not participating reduces obviously the overall settlement numbers as it would to other counties and large cities that weren't wanting to agree to participate. It's my understanding that majority of counties have registered to participate. My purpose is of today's hearing with me to hear whether the commission would make a motion to participate in both the Johnson Johnson agreement, the distributors agreement, and the one while the opioid settlement, which really just details how the funds would be distributed, what they'd be distributed for. Our county's share of this, although that could change, nothing is absolutely final on this in the neighborhood. I believe of around eight hundred eighty thousand dollars, eight hundred eighty one thousand six hundred dollars. That would, between the two agreements, that would be spread out over a period of roughly seventeen and a half years of those payments. Those payments we have to use to alleviate or mitigate the effects of the opioids in our community, which Park County certainly has been a victim of that. For that would be.
I'd like to run out one quick question, what's the distribution formula based on? I've been reading this stuff that we have here, I can't figure it out.
This term there, I believe it was population, most.
But it just lends to that, it seems like the least populated counties are getting the most funds, but makes sense.
And I don't, I've not been certainly in touch with the EDG's office from that. I know ours, for example, compared to Sheridan Townings was higher than Sheridan County's. I know the city of Sheridan participated independently through this, but even if you add those two up, what that formula is. Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, I, please. So from an attorney's aspect, I looked at what would be the drawbacks of participating. I really can't see it, I can't imagine Park County at this juncture going after these companies independently. Certainly would just be way too expensive. Though our drawbacks from participating, I don't see one of those would be. Some money, some a lot of money over that period of time compared to what opioids have done to Park County and other counties in the state. There was nothing whatever they got for that, certainly other than that, but it's something that could be used, I guess, towards opportunities.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would make a motion that we approve, yeah, sign the settlement agreements with Johnson and Johnson and the distributors.
And allow the shared side?
Allow the shared side.
Okay. Remove the section for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Think about it. That right now, you can have.
I would be good.
The scarf almost exactly like yours.
I love it.
I know, isn't it fun?
I have another color too, I mean it's kind of like the lime green, it's a different match.
Matches my Halloween dress really nice.
Isn't that always this?
But that's other way. Maybe you're.
Definitely not. I hope you're welcome.
You're welcome. Don't just red reek. I mean, you know, it's kind of blah this year.
Still festive.
Huh?
Still festive.
Still festive.
Mark, how do you spell that? Okay, thank you very much.
Right, and don't get your swimmer crew at one thirty, sorry. And don't forget to go hack once.
Yeah, we have to do that, that's the order. And watch the game? Or.
I will be listening to the game now.
I'm gonna zoom in. I will be cleaning.
Hey, well, we got lunch downstairs.
Do you want whatever we can give you?
Right. Let me just sweep this all down here. Was that too many?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for here. So we, uh, kick it out?
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Thank you for here. So we, uh, kick it out?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, got Philip Bowman on the teleprompter there. Um, and then we wanted to kind of chat and give you an update on the sewer lagoon situation wastewater, uh, ongoing problem. Since we last talked, we've had, you know, a couple of meetings and conversations and done some analysis with engineering associates and, uh, Phillip's done some research on his own too. And, and he's got some experience in another wastewater facility down in, well, uh, well, uh, he talked, uh, you know, some kind of crutch the numbers and whatnot. And what I passed up, I think I've detailed this to you. Um, where I think we're at, there's, there's a, you know, spirit between the city and building and family of kind of working together to help try to identify or work towards a solution to this problem. Um, what we found out, we've been talking to the guys at state clean water SRF, and if we go, we think there'll be some principal forgiveness money available after the first year and lots can depend on just what's going on at federal level and how much more money is available. Whether or not they're going to take our funds through clean water SRF, but there's just a lot of other things that are kind of going on. And if we assume a worst case scenario, uh, 30 years, uh, at 1.25%, no principal forgiveness. You can see, um, what the rates would be, the blue would be, um, the, uh, capital requirement cost. And then the orange would be the operational cost or whatever else down in the religion. So you can kind of see what, what we'd be up against. Phillip's done a lot of correction the numbers on the whole of the upside. There's still a lot of unknowns. That's part of why Phillip wanted to get on the, uh, on call today. Um, you know, some of the loading concentrations, which, which has a lot to what that cost of that treatment would be, is still kind of being worked out. So, you know, if, if the county were to contribute a million dollars, and that's what I was going to come in here to say, you know, we could try to, uh, keep the rates down, go into a long-term project, you know, with the city. Uh, try to keep the rates under $70 per thousand. And, and I think that's still possible, doable. Um, where I think Phillip's got some concern and rightly so is if those operational costs, which is that orange side, that they crawl up because of the concentration of more than what we thought. There's some big toss in there, but other things that aren't that. So, so they're a little leery to lock in on a number. So what we thought might be the best step forward, it would be instead of the county committee to a dollar amount to, uh, keep the rates down to buy down the rates of the blue four of this project, if the county would be willing to contribute, um, we're thinking like half of the, or more than half of the engineering related costs, which is still part of this, possibly could be subtracted out at the end, but we go ahead and get an engineer board, work towards the application, the design. And, uh, whether we hire that person as the county or whether the city does, it's pay the county or the city, uh, you know, it might be cleaner if it's just the county at this point, but we work together with the city. Uh, but it wouldn't be money, I'm standing to be getting, answering some of these questions, getting the engineering done. We'd be taking a step forward. We re-grouped after they get their preliminary design concepts, application, and then we can tell you better, if you spend another 850,000, we feel better that those rates are going to be in the market. If we don't, we could still say it doesn't work with the city and we're going to take the money and convert and just go work with the county facility and still be money spent in that direction. So, so I guess what I'm asking, or Phillip, you want to say anything? You want like said there, did I, did you hear all that?
I did hear it. I was unmuting. Yeah. I, I think I would just, uh, even summarize it more so to, to say quite simply, we've, we've taken all of the steps possible At a conceptual level and, and define, you know, what we can based on. Uh, the knowledge we have, the information and data we have. Uh, for a conceptual level analysis, if there's. Uh, support to move forward into a preliminary design. I think that preliminary design money. Uh, investment of, of some preliminary design money. Would be advantageous to either scenario of, of either upgrades or. Further operation if the county decided of your lagoon facilities or to a. A city facility at our wastewater treatment facility that, that preliminary design effort's going to benefit either one of those outcomes. And ultimately getting a project in front of the state revolving fund and SLib board. For funding approval. So I, I think we've just, we've kind of done what we can conceptual. We need that next step of. Additional detail and some preliminary design. To continue to move forward with our alternatives evaluation. And um, either, either one of those two alternatives of. Operation of the county facility or, or receiving this at the city facility. Are ultimately going to lead to an SRF application that this preliminary design would support.
So Mr. Commissioner, real quick, so I guess what, what I think we're asking today or what I'm asking is. You know, commitment of an investment of a hundred fifty thousand to get us, get us going. An approval to let us go out for a request for qualifications because we started going that application, we got to do a qualification based selection. Get our engineer on board. Right now we've been just asking without DGA, just as there's a lot of help. But, but we really need to go through the process to get them on board as our engineering consultant. With a budget of not exceed a hundred fifty thousand, if you're good with that. And maybe it's a step in the direction of.
My only concern is this hundred fifty thousand that you're going to. Spend on engineering, for me, come up conception is based on partnership with, with Cody. So I would rather just commit to a full million. Provided they enter into the, the long-term agreement, whichever route they want. Typically because if we go a hundred fifty thousand, it's for one thing. And we decide not to do it, I don't think that money can be used from ours. Unless we go forward with our own project, but their project is already based on the city. So I don't see how that can work both ways.
Well, we, we're thinking it's a similar, similar facility. The, the other part, it told me frankly about a little bit is. It's a, we're trying to make sure we stay where we have a facility when we're done, that's, that's within the market. Cost to where we don't lose people, but it's, it's affordable for the users. And what I guess the fear is, you know, what I don't want to have to do is we put it, you guys put in a billion. And we come back and it doesn't work or, or, you know, we have to do something else. We gotta ask for more money to keep the rates down. You know, we, we, we thought from, if I sit in your shoes, let's take a real measured approach to this. We're all at the table, city and county, just step by step doing it. I'm not saying we'd spend a hundred fifty, that's a budget. But we take it step by step. You know, we may get somebody that's not, they may come in, they may not like what we do. This will work and we'll do something else, you know. So we, we just need money, you know, expert engineering firm on board to head down in a positive direction.
The way I look at it, we have three possible things we can do. One is we go ahead and we work with the city and let them take it all, you know, and however much we end up paying for, we pay for, give them the keys and walk away. Two, upgrade our facility. Or three, own our facility and let people go someplace else. That's the precision we're looking at. So I guess my question was, we allocate a hundred fifty for the design. Whether the county takes it over and does it with a new facility. Or the city does it with their, an upgrade of their existing facility. Are we, is the design basically the same? We're not going to spend money we don't need to spend, do we?
It's going to be similar. There's a lot of the same. Philip, you want to answer that? You're more of a wastewater guy than I am.
I, I believe it'll be very similar. I, I, again, I think one of the first tasks that would come out of this. Uh, scope of work in, in this work with a consultant would be an additional. Detailed analysis of the alternatives. I, I think we've done some. Very conceptual analysis of the alternatives and, and I think. You know, based on feedback from, from you all at the county level and also from my city council. I, I think we're, we are all at the table and see, you know. Bringing this to a city, to the city's treatment plan is a very viable option, but I, I can't deny that. I think the option of some upgrades at your existing facility is still viable. It, but we've, we've kind of done as much as we can at a conceptual level with. That conceptual data. To, to say that both are viable, but. I, I would offer, there's still some additional analysis to say which is. The more cost effective or better long-term solution. I think there's. Still valid pros and cons that EA I'd identified for both of those options, but I definitely think we've. Narrowed it down to say those are probably the, the two options and. This, this level of investment would further that analysis to make sure. We're moving forward with the best, the best option for all of us. For the county and for the city.
The concern that you brought up commissioners is, and I think that's part of what Philip and I was trying to keep a controlled tab on. We don't want to spend money on something that we've got to turn around, redesign it for something else. So we're not asking that. It's a hundred fifty thousand to head into. The analysis, the direction, conceptual design, preliminary design. You know, but, but we won't take, we'll be communicating with you and take steps as we go. So I'm, I'm hoping that direction will, will fall out of this.
I can have one follow-up question here real quick. So basically what we'd be doing today, if we go ahead and. Agree to a budget not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is going to answer all of those questions that we need answered in order to make the progress.
Yes, yes. And we would have an engineering firm on board and a qualification based selection. To get us to that next step. Where are we headed? What's it going to take? What's the best option? What are we streaming?
Thank you.
Fundy. No, just thinking about what Commissioner Teal said about, about the million now and, and I. I would hate to, to tie up that million funds. Right now in the RP money, not knowing where we're going to go or what's going to work out, I'd rather choose that hundred and fifty and do. I guess what I would consider like a level two study, figuring out where we need to be before we make that commitment. We've still got a little bit of time. We've got a couple of years left to, to sort out this money and a hundred and fifty will definitely give us. Which direction we want to go, but it might not be a million if we stay with our own. We don't want that.
I, Mr. Chairman, I'll follow up this here as long as that hundred fifty is. Designed, although I do believe that we need to. Keep in mind at the very least, say, an additional need of a hundred fifty. In our pocket of the, the arts funding so that if we continue either road, go down. That we have at least that much committed to progress. That's right. Do you have a timeframe on what this initial?
Well, I think we'd start right after the first of the year, getting the request for qualifications statement out there and. I don't know, Philip, you think of, you know, a scope of maybe report back by summer or, you know, see where we're at on preliminary analysis?
I, I would estimate. Six months, more or less. So we, and then that I think falls in place well with. Uh, SRF funding application deadlines, which are for September of twenty twenty-two. So we. We'd have some good information and be able to. Come back to both county commission and city council about what direction to move forward with and prepare. Uh, an SRF funding application for that September of twenty twenty-two timeframe.
We could try to tie it to the budget a little bit too, to where we could go into the next budget with better ideas. I'm going to say firm members, but it's a lot better idea with the members.
It just seems like we're, we're also paying for, for something we're not huge to, right? Uh, the engineering of our alternatives and such, but it seemed. Like we sort of had a good marriage between county and the city. Wouldn't it be cheaper if we hired an engineer to say, well, engineer. The city of Cody got this new addition to a, the lagoon, just that part. Would that? Be a lot cheaper or instead of spraying a crayon, you know, with these other alternatives that we're paying for? Why not just deal with the city of Cody? Because that's a disinter, seemed like it was, it was a pretty good solution. Well, at least on the county side. And maybe on.
And I think that is our, our plan A. That's, that's.
That's quite A.
Yeah, that's, well, that's the direction we're headed. What, what I think would be. Some more in-depth analysis of the way through. And then I know they're still watching what their facility can and can't do. They're, they're still collecting data. But I guess. I'm speaking for Philip, but they're, they're not ready to a hundred percent dive in if they can do that. And, and we're trying to get to that point. So that, that's where I think we're all headed. It's just for you guys to commit a billion and we say, yeah, we're going to be under seventy dollars per thousand. City's going to take this for thirty years. I think we're, I know Philip is, the city taking all that risk is probably not very good right now.
Commissioner Teal was talking about maybe the hundred fifty being deducted from the million.
Yeah, and that's what we're thinking. Oh, yeah, that's what we're thinking.
What about the SRS funds though? I mean, is there a timeframe and how much is available there if we? Don't go after that immediately. Is there a chance that isn't available come, time to get done with this analysis?
There's a chance. We think it's only going to get better with the principal forgiveness. So I think what we're, what you did to the, you said Philip would shoot for August next year that.
Yeah, my under, my understanding is the SRF. Typical application period is, is a September timeframe for applications for new projects and new funding. Um, I think there is some flexibility that we can apply at any time, but September is kind of their main timeframe. Um, what we do know about SRF. Um, and the SLib funding package is that there's. Basically to summarize, there's always loan money available. You can go to SRF. Clean Water Fund, which this would be a project under and always get a loan. Uh, the principal forgiveness is what varies year to year and that's, or, or biannually and that's legislative. Appropriations based. So right now, they wouldn't, if we went in today and got approved, we could get approved for a loan. But they do not have any loan forgiveness to be available. So after this coming budget session in the legislature. This spring, there will be new appropriations that would allow them to start. Uh, providing loan forgiveness again. In addition to that, we are aware that the state's ARPA funding. Is likely for water and wastewater projects is likely to be administered. By the SRF program. So with that injection of additional ARPA funding. There's a very good chance that they, they may be able to in this next two-year cycle. Allow a higher level of loan forgiveness, possibly up to fifty percent as some of the. Discussions Mayor Hall has heard through. The legislature and through Wyoming Association of Municipalities so that the. That the loan funding will always be there. Whether we can get a higher level of, of loan forgiveness is yet to be seen, but. But it does seem like those cards are, are playing out rather well that we could be a project that's eligible for. As much as fifty percent loan forgiveness in this next year or two. But there's, there's certainly not any concern that the loan funding will go away. That's a revolving fund of current loans.
We got fifteen minutes to cover a lot of ground.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll do this, this to kind of cap it off too. I, I think what we're looking for today is. Is it's really whether the city, we're trying to convince them to take on the risk, you know, and it's a thirty, it's a thirty-year commitment. And, uh, you know, and the county get out of a, a business so it's an investment towards the city. Giving them some comfort and confidence to take on that risk. And that's really what it's about. And then buying those rates down to the point where, uh. Where, where we can still have a marketable, a sell for the users.
I think let's wrap it up.
It's going to be emotional.
Okay. I'd be even better.
Mr. Chairman, I move to. Use, uh, spend a hundred fifty, uh, two hundred fifty thousand of our, our funding. For a further analysis, general analysis on. The wastewater project to employ a engineer for, sorry, not quite, sorry.
Be kind of level two, yeah. Level two design, whatever you call it.
Moving second is, is there further discussion?
I just think it's the best thing to look into for our constituents.
All right, all those in favor?
I am.
Those, motion carried.
Thank you, Philip. Thanks, Philip. The other items I think will be fairly quick. Staffing issues. First thing that brought, talk along with the, we, uh. Were considering, would like, I guess for you to consider. We, we're having our mechanic since he took over, uh, ten, a couple of years, year and a half. He's doing a great job, just spread pretty thin. He's taken over the landfill related equipment also and, and just, you know, even a little bit other departments. He's, he's doing a lot and spread between Powell shop, Cody shop. Landfill, you know, he's spent a lot of time running to pick something that's fairly lighter, pretty easy. You know, and we have some good guys on the crews that, that do a lot of the different face changes over a lot of their own services, but. Some of those little smaller things that, uh, you know, they're busy doing their jobs out on the road bridge crew. But, but we, after talking to Ted a little bit, talked with the road bridge foreman. It would really help us if we could take one of their. Operators that's, uh, you know, mechanically inclined. We've got two of them that applied for the mechanic position when we hired Ted. And reclassify them to where they are still an operator, but maybe half their time is committed towards, uh. Helping the mechanics Ted's side to service the counties fleet of vehicles. Equipment and primarily working in Powell would be the, would be the thought, but really go wherever, natural, power, land, or just whatever it takes. I mean, it would be Paco and Ted, the mechanic at the road bridge for the. Kind of deciding, working it out. If we're snowing, we're, he's flat on snow or we got all the projects, he needs to be doing a project. And if it's, uh, if we've got something pressing, we got this truck, we got to get it back online. That's the pressing thing. You have a Ted, they're talking and they, he goes, he works on all the truck. You know, so mechanics side, you're working for Ted more. Road bridge side, you'd be working for Paco. But I really think this, the other thing, kind of keep in mind that we're paying that money anyway, whether we were paying. Out of, you know, in terms of when, when Ted can't keep up, which is we're paying somebody outside it, which, which is, it's all good. It's just. Best use of our, our people, I think, we could, as long as we can do that. So we'd like to reclassify position and, you know, we're thinking. Twenty-two an hour-ish, you know, maybe somewhere in that range and, uh, when I have to work with Kolyne to figure out where we're going to fit that in. Class-wise and grade step-wise. Uh, we would not hire anybody else in the way of like a road bridge operator to fill in for the loss. Paco basically can absorb about fifty percent of his time. And we're working together good with the Cody and Powell crews and even landfill. So we're sharing people, sharing equipment. We think we can, we, 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 our needs more on the mechanic side than it is on the road bridge side.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know your time sets it here, but. Initially, I was not really up for this idea. Simply I don't like going down, going down on a fly swivel, one mechanic for thirty plus years. We have newer, nicer equipment. I don't seem to need, however, I've done some checking and I, I truly believe that this is a good move. Uh, visit with Ted out there, a mechanic, and he is busy. He has good ideas to improve any maintenance things that he's not able to do just because he has to keep up the basic maintenance. And I didn't realize at the time that we never used to maintain landfill equipment of which we is doing now. I had that confirmed yesterday by the manager out there. They have a perfect fit within house and like I said, just in overtime that we're paying our current mechanic. On average, about ten, he's claiming ten hours a week.
Oh, yeah.
Would even actually save us money by even giving somebody a little bit of a raise and co-op rate. So what that I would like to move to allow to fill the. Reclassification of an employee for the Powell road bridge.
All right, I'll second that with discussion too. I like the idea behind rich. Employee has got a clerk mechanic, you know, or whatever we can do and spread it around. The only difficult part two would be when you have to replace that person.
Yeah.
Would you, do you need to? Uh, would you, do you need to replace that? That's the downside of that.
Yeah.
But I think also on the plus side, it, it creates a job that uh is, is a little easier to work for. It doesn't become as boring. So, you know, there's pros and cons.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. Everyone, real quick for you both, I, I know you're short on time. Uh, Pock, would you have anything you would add to that?
Everybody's covered much, I question, I wanted to say.
Well, there is a need for, and we do have two people that, that hit that category. I think related towards one, but we, we've got to kind of be sensitive for that. So we're going to put your, your cost between the two. Okay, we just want to make sure that it's a good fit.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those, motion carried.
Thank you.
You got one more.
One more. Uh, so the next one is, you know, our, our kind of the situation on the landfill side with us, you know, losing track. We're advertised now for the landfill manager uh position. Uh, Sandy's assumed the role, I would say, since Greg moved on or moved up, that's kind of the assistant landfill manager. Uh, and we just have, we're having a heck of a time batting that office uh just with uh, you know, with Sandy's out, everything kind of falls apart. And, and, and we try to cover with uh with the, or our other people. We just don't have enough people with, with holidays, vacations, sick. And, and it's more of just an answer from the phone thing. It's uh, you know, the business side, but it's the accounts payable, accounts receivable, quick book, she runs. Uh, so uh, it's, it's going to be, I, Colleen, I talked to her a little bit. It's a little bit of a, not a really an in- entry level clerical. It's more of a, I don't say high-end administrative position, but we need somebody to come in, do the work and not just occupy a chair.
Right, so I was kind of looking at this and we have office assistant two and three, um, which is various, all various departments, so the office assistant. So let me find, the three is starts at seventeen forty to twenty-four eighty-four. And the two, so I guess depending on how qualified we are coming in, um, the two is fourteen forty to twenty-eighteen one.
I guess I was hoping you would, would approve us up to eighteen.
So that would fall in, well, it'd fall in either one of them, so.
Eighteen and one, because it's just the climate right now that, you know, McDonald's persists, it's that would be. Uh, and we, we need a, we need somebody that's got up these Sandy's quitas.
You know, just a couple, couple of quick questions. Well, I mean, we were handling everything okay until Sandy got COVID, weren't we?
Um, not really, uh.
I'll, I'll just add really quick. So uh, the auditors have been after us for several years now, but no, there is no, there is no one else in that department handling all that money. So again, with our promise that we would get this taken care of and cross-train somebody to do all this stuff, which we thought we would be using Greg, but now he's leaving.
Well, Greg never actually got cross-trained either.
No.
No.
So when Sandy was out, we were really behind the eightfold.
Right, and you have.
But if we have somebody new coming in and we do cross-train that right up front, if you Sandy's work and fight versus it, can we get along without hiring a new person?
Oh, I see your question.
Um, can we? I'm going to say probably yes. Uh, it depends what we get to write to your person back down.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'll be honest with you. I mean, because of the federal money we've gotten this year, we've all sort of, okay, our budgetary woes have gone away, but they haven't gone away.
Yeah, I, I get that. I, I do get that. I guess, I guess kind of keep in mind too that, you know, they operate, you remember when Travis was here, it shows the landfill manager, assistant landfill manager and administrative assistant. Um, you know, and, and if you wanted to wait, see what happens with the landfill manager job before we do that.
There you go.
If we can do that, if it was, I just, here's my problem is that office, there's hardly ever anyone there. And it, it, it not just, not just, I don't say hardly ever, there's a lot of times there's nobody there. And I'm just trying to, we got to do something that it seems like when Sandy is out. And, and she does other things, you know, keep my assistant manager now. So she's picking up money in Powell or doing things and going to Cody for things and, and that office has just left abandoned.
Go ahead.
Trying to get a piece of top water. I believe, and I'm asking this to you.
Yeah.
We need administrative assistant in that, in the landfill part or that we uh, 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 form. We already have more or less forms.
That's true.
The day-to-day operations, from what I'm seeing, is really working even without Greg. So, but where we're going to fall behind is on the proper permitting and, and reporting.
And so, I've got that.
So I, I've been wanting to wait, but we decide whether we're going to replace Greg. I think this person is more important than Greg's person and they're saving money.
Well, we've already made the decision of replacing him.
We're advertised, we're advertising. But, but whether or not.
Yeah, we're advertising.
Yeah, whether or not there's a quality person in that mix is still yet to be determined. So I think what Mr. Teal said, Commissioner, what Lloyd said is, is very true. That right now, uh, when we hired Greg, we had a lot of problems that out of there. That part, we're not at that same place today. Where, where we, where we're falling down now is the business side of running the landfill department. And, and I'm going to say like a trapper bin type, the guys that run it in the road bridge, trapper bin. And, you know, that's Sandy in landfill, she does a great job, but so that, that is a problem. Doesn't.
Real quick, the other discussion that we've had in the past is you were going to have Whitney try to cover some after Aaron left. That's proved to be a little difficult because Whitney has so much in your office to do and she can't follow through with a lot of that. So we are in that area still down a little bit and still have the issue of meeting all of the requirements. So I think this is a, a good way to at least start to address some of that and make sure that it's to where, what's going on every day.
Yeah, what does, what does being, what does being one down in Road Bridge that, that has proven? The thing I wasn't thinking about was vacations, honey, people being gone sick with the sickening and, and Whitney's whole generation.
So I would make a motion that we approve the hiring of an administrative assistant in the landfill that they didn't have requested.
Second.
Okay, moving second, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we those? Okay, thank you, guys. It's done time.
We should keep everybody busy, Joe, without, we try to.
Well, you know, I mean, we get, we get accused all the time, you know, increasing county government, increasing county government. And we have kept it low.
Keep in mind that we're down.
Shut so down.
And so we're, we're hiring a higher quality level too, doing more. Eventually, I think we'll dial it, so just trying to cover the base.
I voted aye.
I know. I want you to come on board.
It's more than you, but down the road, I'm not sure when they need their friends.
Exactly. It is, I think we don't hold the trigger.
We can take a little bit of work in your office, but we need administrative assistance to help on that part.
Thanks, Pock.
Thanks, Pock. Greg, you're here too. I don't miss you.
Brian, can you do that description?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, then I'll let you write. Yeah.
Next up, we have Jason Lund, Alex Morgan with the auditors report. Guys, whoever wants to, you can start talking. There's Jason.
Hey, thanks for having us and, and thanks for accommodating a Zoom presentation. Appreciate it. You know, this last week before Christmas, it's nice to be home a little bit. Uh, so, so thank you for that. Um, this year, we've completed the financial statement audit yet again. Um, you know, in connection with that, we appreciate the help that we received from both the clerk treas- and treasurer's office and, and from, from other departments as well. Um, it takes a lot of work, a lot of effort to get through these audits. Um, over, over four hundred hours for us to get through the county's audit. There's a lot of, a lot of transactions, a lot of accounts in you guys' books. And so with that being said, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my screen. Do you all have a copy of the PDF file perchance of the audit report?
Yep.
Yep, awesome. Great, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen um and kind of walk you through the audit report. So. Alrighty, um, so I'm just going to start on the first page here. The outline of this report is a bit different than it's been in the past. If you were to compare it to last year's report, you would think that, hey, you know, things are a bit different in terms of the order of how this is presented. Um, and so what, this is a new statement on auditing standards that requires a new layout for our report. And also it kind of focuses in on going concern a little bit more and, and a few other items. But in essence, the, the word underlying it is very similar um to what was done in the past. And our opinion over these financial statements is that they're fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP. So we're given a clean opinion over the financial statements um yet again. And the basis for that opinion is all the, you know, over four hundred hours of work that we put into this job. Um, you know, we were initially scheduled to, back in October to come on site and we ended up having to delay that for a week. Um, one of our professionals, our CPAs from Gillette, uh, came in town and, and worked that week. But our, our Utah office that was going to bring a few people up, we didn't go because we had a, there was a storm headed over South Pass. And it's like, you just don't mess with South Pass in snowy conditions really. So we had delayed that, but we still were able to get through the work um rather well and timely. So, so that, that's the audit report itself there. Um, what we're going to do now is we're going to go back to page fifty-four of the PDF file. That's page forty-six of the hard copy, or of the PDF file here. Now, whenever we do a governmental audit, we are required to consider internal controls that are located with that particular government agency. So at the county, we have an understanding from the years of experience that we have with you of the basic controls over the different transaction classes. We update that understanding each year. Um, and in the current year, we did not find any deficiencies that were considered either significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that needed, were required to be reported here on this report. So we'll go to the next one on page fifty-six of the PDF file. On this page, this is result of the county having spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal awards during the year. Um, it requires this audit that is kind of a different audit. It's called a single audit or audit in accordance with uniform guidance. So what we did is we went in and we selected the major program. Not surprisingly, the major program for the year was the coronavirus relief fund money that you all received. Um, and in connection with that, as you look on this next page, on page fifty-seven, we do have one finding to report and we'll go over that now. So here on page fifty-eight of the PDF file, on page fifty, this is the summary of results. You can see that there's one finding, this material weakness um related to the coronavirus relief fund monies. Uh, more specifically, it was with the community charitable relief fund. And we've seen this, I, I've seen this mistake with other counties this year. And I'm not like overly concerned by this mistake. What happened, um, but we had to report it this way. So you can see in the finding here, you could read it for yourself, but really the, the gist of what's happening here is that under the community charitable, charitable relief fund money that you received from the state, there was like a time crunch, it seemed like, where you got money from the state. Then they said, okay, if you don't spend this money within a certain timeframe, you got to send the money back. Well, there was a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of money that was not spent within the community and it was sent back to the state. And that, that amount of money was reported as an expenditure on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And it does not meet the definition of an expenditure because it was a return of funds. And so that's, that was a misstatement on the CIFA that was initially provided to us. It's been corrected, you know, in the final CIFA that's included in this audit report. But that's, that's the reason for the finding. Um, you know, we've talked this over with management, they're aware of it, easy to fix um and move forward. So again, you know, while we have to report it, not something that I'm, that I'm overly concerned about because the money was sent back to the state as it was supposed to be. There was just a clerical error in terms of how the amounts were reported in the trial balance and on the CIFA schedule itself. It wasn't in compliance, so. So that, that's really, that, that's our finding there. Now, we also have a letter um that's addressed to you all. Um, this is the letter to those charged with governance or the governance letter. Um, this letter is required under auditing standards that we provide to you and we have provided to you this letter every year. Um, it rehearses um what our responsibilities were as, as auditors over the financial statements and, and various items. Um, what I'd like to do is go to page three and kind of discuss some of the other findings or issues that we didn't fill rose to the level that needed to be reported inside of the audit report, but nonetheless are important um to fix going forward. And we have had discussions with Colleen and Barb and the rest of the team there um and including the sheriff as well regarding um what we're talking about here. So the first um bullet point here has to do with the sheriff's department and um SAR, the search and rescue nonprofit organization. It's based on the preliminary work that we did and discussions with the sheriff. It sounds like this um nonprofit organization should be included in the county's audit in future periods, you know, kind of going forward. Um, and so our recommendation is for you all to follow up with the sheriff's, the sheriff and make sure that, you know, that information is ready for audit next year. Um, the next one is um related to GAZV eighty-four. That's a new standard. You know, GAZV eighty-four, it scrutinizes fiduciary funds and how they're reported. And we found that the commissary fund was not being reported as an enterprise fund and we believe that should occur going forward and that um, you know, should have proper controls over, over that fund as well. And then the, the third item here was, there was just an oversight by the road and bridge department that we're pointing out here just because of the dollar value of the mistake. There was a, a mistake on one of the spreadsheets there in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, again, that has been corrected. We identified that in the audit, it's corrected, but we didn't think that this was, again, significant enough that we didn't feel like it had to be reported in connection with the standard audit report. Um, and then here on page four, yet again, a repeat for the Parks and Recreation Board, just calling out that they have a little bit of a segregation of duty problem. And we expect that that continues going forward and, and just to be cognizant of that and the oversight that you have with Parks and Rec Board. So with that being said, um, that really is kind of the first part of the presentation. I know it's a little bit awkward when I'm on, I, I'm not in person. And again, I appreciate allowing us to do this presentation remotely this year. Um, do you have any questions? The next part of our, our presentation will be by Alex Florrick, our, our manager here. And he'll go through um the financial statement highlights for the year. But before that, any questions?
Anybody else for, Jason? Okay, thank you, Jason.
Thanks, go ahead, Alex. Thanks. Go ahead, Alex. You're muted, Alex.
Am I good to share my screen as well? Let's see. Well, once again, thanks for having me. Um, in this part of the presentation, I'm gonna jump backwards to the financial statements. So if you have it in front of you, uh, if you wouldn't mind, turn it to page six or page eleven of the PDF, if you're on the PDF. So starting off, I'm gonna go over the balance sheet for your governmental funds, which includes your general fund, your county road construction fund and E nine-one-one. And uh, would you guys like me to zoom? Does that make it a little bit better for you? So first off, I'd just like to point out um, what the total fund balance was for the general fund at the end of the year. You have a healthy general fund, fund balance, which is good. This amount increased by almost two point three million dollars from the prior year. Um, and the reason for that is your assets went up by about two million dollars while your total liabilities decreased by about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And the composition of that increase with your um, your increase in your assets was this increase in cash and investments went up by, your cash went up by four point eight million. But as you notice, there's no longer any investments in the current year when you had three point three million dollars of investments last year. And the reason for that is because those investments of three point three million dollars were your sigma investments, which matured during the fiscal year. And when they matured, you took those funds and you put them inside of what's called a pooled investment account. And due to the liquidity of that account, uh, we call, we classified that as a cash and actually a cash equivalent instead of an investment. And so that's why if you're trying to compare to the prior year, there's not an investment line item. It's just because that pooled investment account is inside of cash. Another large or another significant increase from the prior year was this receivable or what we call a due from another fund that increased by two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And those were really the two large components of the increase in your total assets in the general fund. Uh, the components of the decrease in your liabilities in the general fund was this unavailable revenues decreased by three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And if you're unsure what this is, um, because of the accounting standards, your receivables right here inside of these three receivables, anything that's received outside of the sixty-day window, we don't recognize as revenue at the fund level. It's recorded as a deferred inflow. And then at the gov-wide level is when we recognize that revenue. And so this represents um, money that's received um, outside of the sixty days, so outside of, you know, July, August, um, after the fiscal year end, which is called unavailable revenue. Besides that, everything was quite consistent. If we're looking at the county road construction fund, very similar to the prior year, nothing to point out there. E nine-one-one, you did see uh, in your, at your total assets, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. And that was mainly due to the fact that you saw a net income, which we'll go over on the follow, the following page of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, one thing I also want to point out is this large increase to cash. So if you take total cash and total investments inside of the general fund and you compare it to total cash and total investments in the prior year, that still did increase by one point five. And the reason for that was you had a healthy change in your fund balance of almost two point two billion dollars, which will go on to the next page. So I don't know if you have any questions on the balance sheet, but if not, let's turn off. If you wanna follow me to the page number eight, it's two pages after this one. Which is your statement of revenues expenditures. And as you know, this, this year with COVID and everything was anything but a normal year. Um, and so there's quite a few changes kinda recognized here. Um, some of the larger ones was this intergovernmental, so this is money revenue received from other government agencies increased by two point two billion dollars. Lots of COVID money, um, lots of COVID relief funds coming through other federal grants that you received that you hadn't received in previous years. Uh, another thing to note is this total tax revenue number did decrease by almost four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So with those two components, total revenue increased by one point five million dollars as compared to the prior year for this general fund. Um, however, it's interesting enough, which was almost expected, your total expenditures stayed about the same. A little fluctuation from the prior year. And then given all that, given this increase to your revenues, you saw there was a increase in this change in your fund balance or your net income. If you wanna call it that, from the prior year. Uh, last year, you saw six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar increase and this year was two point two billion dollars. Um, looking at the activity for the county road construction fund, you had quite a few more road construction improvement projects. This nine hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars increased from the prior year by seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, your revenue for the E nine-one-one increased by a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which was mainly due to the fact that you guys have increased your rates over there. Um, and then in terms of the activity for governmental funds, that's about it. Was there any questions before I jump over to the activity for the landfill? Any questions on governmental funds and their activity? If not, let's jump over to page eight. Um, and the landfill, you can see that the landfill's assets, um, you got a healthy amount of assets at the landfill. That amount increased, your total assets also increased by about eight hundred thousand dollars from the prior year. Mainly due to the fact that you had an increase in cash and investments of one point one billion dollars, but then at the same time, you had a decrease to your capital assets of accumulated depreciation. And that decrease from last year was just due to depreciation expense. Uh, I think you had very few capital additions in the current year. Um, also looking at your liabilities, your liabilities increased by seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the largest component of that was just because of this closure and post-closure liability, which increased by six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which is based on engineering estimates that we get from your public works department, from uh, Brian Edwards. And then looking at current year activity on the next page for the landfill. You had a pretty good, healthy increase in your charges for services out there. That increased by three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Lots of uh, quite a bit more activity over there at the landfill. Additionally, your expenses increased by four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. As I touched earlier, that is just due to the fact that this change in your post-closure liability increased by the, from the prior year by four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So kind of a lot to take in from the current year, but those are the highlights. Uh, not sure if you have any questions, or if you do, feel free to analyze the financial statements in a little bit more depth. And if you have any specific questions for Jason or myself, feel free to reach out to us directly if you need our contact. Um, Barbara Colleen can help you with that. So uh, we really appreciate working with you and your county. Um, we just like to give high praises to management, Barb, Colleen, Hans, Steve and Carrie for all that they do. They do an awesome job, so we really appreciate working with them.
Any questions for Alex? We sure appreciate you guys taking the time and you guys have a Merry Christmas.
You too, as well. Thank you.
See you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Yeah, take care.
So did you understand the hundred and twenty-four thousand? And we're working with, we'll work with the sheriff on the SOR. With the landfill figures, were, were those up for the entire year or were they only raised for part of that year? Do you remember when we raised them versus?
Raised them.
So it would have been partial. Okay, it would have been partial that year. Okay, that's what I was saying.
Well, because of what they're or did you raise them that budget or did you raise them in January?
Well, we did the, we did the Sur Le Goons on a January basis, but I thought the year before, I couldn't remember when we raised the landfill and that would be a whole year or whether it was or raised fees on, okay, it just crossed.
I can't remember what happened yesterday.
Did you have any comments?
No. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Seven to seven, fourteen, fifteen, seven. Oh.
What's the score?
Fourteen, sixteen, fourteen, seven, that's right.
Good afternoon.
It's an honor to report.
Yeah.
Next, uh, Kim Dilliam and Park County Planning and Zoning Final Flat Gillette Family Subdivision. Simple subdivision of two sixty-three.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant for this project is Ronnie Gillette. This property is in the GRP zoning district, the planning is Cody Powell Rule. And we received the final application for this simple subdivision on December third of twenty twenty-one, and then we received a revised final plan on December sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. And the applicant re- uh, requests approval to create block one, which should be eight point four eight acres and a block two, which would be eight and a half acres out of an existing three hundred and sixty acre parcel. So there'd be almost two, almost three hundred acres in the, except for me. So um, and I will note that according to the deed, the property of block one is, is currently to Ronnie and Rose and Gillette. Gary Gillette beaded this land um, including block one to a son Ronnie in June fifth, twenty twenty. How it was, it, that was completed as a family exemption. However, um, we came to find out that that was not appropriately done. It didn't meet the family exemption rules. My understanding is because a grantor at that time had not held it for ten years. And so to rectify the situation, our conclusion was that a simple subdivision needed to be approved. So that's why we're here. Then we're following that process. You see, Mr. Chairman, on page two, you see a copy of that final flat again showing lot one and showing lot two. This location is three quarters of a mile approximately west of Ralston. Proposed lot one is just south of County Lane eleven and proposed lot two is a little bit further southeast of that. And lot, proposed lot two is just west of Emory Road. The physical address of the property is sixteen hundred Lane eleven. I mentioned that this is a GRP. The piece lot size is as proposed or consistent with that zoning district. In figure three, we show neighboring land uses primarily agricultural, some residential, and there's some E uh, B O R property uh, just straight south of this property. Proposed lot one does have a special use permit for evaluated egg business. Funny Farm Feeds is the name of it. It has a a three and a twelveth building and then a smaller building. Building permits were issued for shop building and single-family residence on proposed lot one. Proposed lot two is currently vacant. And on figure four, we show topography and there's some slope of west east on this, on this property of both these lots. This property is not within a mile of the municipality, so that review is not required. Of course, a public hearing is not required for final platform view. We notified agencies and we shared their responses with you. Hart Mountain Irrigation District all the way back in twenty twenty were notified. Um, they did receive a water distribution plan that has been approved. TCT responded. They talked about the ability to provide service to these properties. Two tough guys said they, I believe currently provide solid waste disposal services on the property. They provide investment costs. Postal Service said they can provide mail. Garden Light Power said this is in their service territory. They foresaw that they could provide power. Quality Propane said they currently provide pro- propane to propose lot one. Conservation District um, calculated souls report. They shared a summary of that with us. Weed and Pest Mary did an initial inspection, found weeds, said a plan would be required. That has been approved and showed that with you. Even Fish had no concerns regarding the wildlife. Fire Protection District number one said they could provide fire protection. The treasurer said that property taxes are paid in full. Public Works shared a number of different comments with us, letters and emails. The first letter and email last year talked about road access easement. An email from November one this year commented on the easement requirements. And just kind of a summary of, of some of the things that Public Works said originally, they were then the impression that the access easement coming down from the county lane was going to be twenty feet. Turned out it could only be fourteen feet. My understanding is that Public Works is fine with that width. They also then in the email dated December sixteenth of this year, they provided some language for some notes that they wanted to see on the final plan. And we did put those, those notes were added to the final plan. So anyhow, they, um, our conclusion is that even these or uh, access is satisfactory uh, and that access easement from the county road is, is fourteen feet. School District number one said they can provide bus service. North Coast River Water said that this is not in their territory. We've not received any public comments. Planning and zoning did a review. Mr. Chairman, um, on page seven, I put that, that date was October twentieth of twenty twenty-one. That should be of twenty twenty. Resolution twenty twenty thirty-two. That happened last year. They had three conditions that um, have been met now. The final plant review committee met on December thirteenth of this year. And as I mentioned, we had a, we received a revised final plan on December sixteenth of this year. Man, uh, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, we have some findings and we have a staff recommendation, which is approval, and we have um, three conditions for your consideration.
Any questions for staff? I believe we approve the final platform of Gillette family. Second, moving second, through the discussion. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
Thank you, Misses.
Very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Colleen, you have a number.
Sending the best for last. Thank you for seeing me today. I have a little I'll give everyone a copy. I'm sure Phil has one, but I will give her another. On the first, thank you. I have one for you as well. On the first, thank you. I have one for you as well.
There's a handbook?
It's a handbook.
Where the hell was this twenty years ago?
I have, trust me. So I wanted to give you guys a copy of this, but on the inside page is. Um, the report and because I am the last agenda item of the year, I will be brief. And I'll be concise.
Take off, touch.
No, no, no. I wanted to highlight a couple of things that I thought were worth mentioning in the year. And one of them being the handbook. So we mailed out about twenty-three hundred of these. To the parents of every middle school and high school students in Park County. So it was incredibly well received. By um. All feedback I heard, as a matter of fact, guidance counselors each have a stack in their offices. So they're able to use them and reference them as well. And Yelluston Behavioral is using them, their counselors are using them with their parents and their family therapists. And law enforcement has reached out and. They would like to use these if and when they come across a. Family situation where a family may need more resources. So we are really excited about this.
If I can just somewhere roll the drop.
Well, and that's not true as well. I will say, um. It has a little bit of everything and I've had. Several parents tell me stories, but one in particular shared at a coalition meeting recently that. She went through it with her middle schooler and. She realized how many um of these topics that she needed to um be ha- having conversations with. With her son and. She thought, wow, I thought I was kind of on the early side having these conversations and I needed to be maybe even. A year or two earlier. So I think it's a great resource, it's a great tool, and we're really excited to um bring this to the parents of Park County. Something else is that we were able to work with our local municipalities to um help provide some events. Um, guidelines for um alcohol safety. And as I mentioned there, um promoting responsible alcohol consumption at public events um helps. Provide safer, family-friendly community guidelines. So again, the water monster is making the rounds, it was. Just spotted recently at SantaCon, so it is um. It's very popular and I'm actually considering purchasing another, so it's um has its own calendar and it's it's very popular. The um third item on the um on my highlights is. We recently just finished um training. Overall, about twelve hundred of our Cody middle and high school students in QPR. And QPR, if you don't know, is our. Gatekeeper baseline um suicide prevention training. And that is about an hour, hour and a half. And. Before the summer, we trained all, we had volunteers come in, we had a training team and we were able to train all of the Cody High School students. And. We took three Fridays in December and we were able to, at the invitation of the administration at Cody Middle School. We trained all of the middle school students in QPR as well, so. Including staff uh and students, that's about twelve hundred students uh and it was. I was a part of that training team and it was pretty powerful. I had students that stopped me. Almost after every class to talk to me about something that they were experiencing, a crisis, stress, anxiety. Or a friend. That they were really worried about and they wanted to know what to do. And in some situations, a parent. And they didn't want to get in trouble, but they wanted to help armor that. So for me, that's an amazing accomplishment and I wanted to report that to you guys. Um, along with that, we were able to launch our Ask Eleven. Website, which is a student um campaign that is geared specifically to. Park County students, um actually just high school students now, and we will eventually roll it out to middle school. You may have saw a really nice um article in the Paltrapan about it recently, but it's um going very well and. We are um looking to expand it and possibly at my next report, I can um feature that theme. I'd love to show you guys um some of the aspects of it. And then the last um item I thought was worth mentioning is. We, as you know, we are very active here in our community for um, we participate twice a year in the DEA prescription drug take back day. But I um worked very closely with both Powell and Cody um police departments. And we collected approximately three hundred and forty-two pounds of prescription medications. Um, here in Park County and. I thought that was a lot, but it's that was um, it's a pretty amazing. And so it's not just the most two days, um while we do promote those days. It is um something that our residents take advantage of year round and do drop their medications unused, expired. Or. Any type of medication they want to um get rid of, they can drop that off at their um local police department, so. We do collect that and then it's disposed of properly in the DEA, I'm trying to collect things. Those are the couple of items I wanted to highlight.
I have a question.
Yes.
On on that prescription thing.
Sure.
So um. Do our, do our uh like Osko Drug and Walgreens, do they participate too? Do they have a drop bin? I know like in South Dakota where my brother-in-law passed away, uh Louis Drug had a drop bin. Because you know, some people might not be comfortable taking them to law enforcement.
I I just say.
Absolutely.
And I was just curious. That's a great question and as of right now, for it to be disposed of um through the DEA program. Our law enforcement are the only two that are certified, there's a certification process to collect medications. And they're the only two agencies that are certified in our county, however, um. Well, the pharmacy just went out of my head, it's here, Cody, um give me a second, it'll come. We do have one that if you have unused medications. It will collect um in unopened, you can recycle them and they will disperse them um to families in need. So if you had a medication, it don't, we have, we do have one pharmacy here that participates in that. Uh, we also have prescription um disposal bags that we make available and I can make and I can. I make available at all of our community events as well, that you can dispose of them safely. So they can not go into our water system or a landfill, so. But yes, it's pretty exciting things. Any other questions?
I would have said, Mr. Chairman, that um. Going to these meetings or participating, I already participated in Zoom, but. Last few meetings I've been at, I believe we've had eighteen to twenty at least.
At least.
From what in Park County that are working on this.
And I would actually say our average um and has been about twenty-five. And I really, I've been asked recently what our challenges and our um successes are. And under our successes, I definitely saw partnerships and membership. Uh, just people coming together and and really working hard on on all of these efforts. And so that to me has been a huge success, especially in light of some meeting difficulties and challenges. And so I'm very um very proud of that and I appreciate your participation. Yeah, I'm very excited. I did mention on the back of the report, just for your FYI, I know that um. We have, uh, Commissioner Phil and I have talked about it, the next grant application, yeah, we're back at it again. Will be coming out after the first of the year, the Department of Health is making a couple of. Fine tuning a couple of things, but. We anticipate what those little tweaks are and I I don't anticipate that they'll be anything um. Disruptive or I think it's actually be positive. So I'm looking forward to that application and I'll be working on writing that next. Um, work plan and budget, so.
I will say that when this first came in front of us, I think Mr. Tilden might echo my. My comments, I was doubtful about it. Um, obviously the state wasn't getting it done, so they kicked it to us. But kudos to you, you've done a lot with this, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your support and. I appreciate that somebody's always designated to me, I guess the short straw, I don't know. But I do appreciate it and. I um look forward to rolling this, keep rolling with the next year, so.
Great.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Roddy.
Awesome.
Bring your best, my mom, after they hire you.
Yes, he is Metropolis of Winter Haven, so.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, it's his family. My close meeting. I grow that, Doc.
Thank you very much.
I thought I took it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Teal.
Chairman, I would.
Two one point. Discussion. Discussion. Lou, second it, discussion.
My first year having uh. Having uh. Mr. Livingston as chair certainly was a learning experience. Outstanding job, he's very knowledgeable, the county, and it's really helped me out a lot, so.
Appreciate you, Lou.
Thank you, thank you. This last one, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. The handbook.
Only, yeah, depends on how the vote goes.
Exactly.
No, appreciate it. Uh, it's been as. You know, and I think Commissioner Tilden breathed a great big sigh of relief, but. I'm breathing one too, it's been a, been a tough year, but we're getting, we're getting ahead of it. So with that being said, Lou and seconded further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
No, she carries.
Totally have a great Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.